I call this meeting to order for Tuesday, October 22, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sharon McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Nick Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett.
Here.
Commissioner Warren Robinson.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Reardon.
Here.
Commissioner Mark Tapley.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you, Dylan. We are going to start with our invocation given by Pastor Shelby Moon of Westminster Presbyterian Church, and followed by our pledge led by Commissioner Paul.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we commit to you this meeting of our city commission. We pray that your Holy Spirit would grant wisdom to those involved. We pray that the decisions made here would be in accord with the general principles of your holy word. We pray that in part through this meeting, Alamo Gordo would benefit in love, in joy, in peace, in righteousness, in justice. Grant your strength and protection to those who enforce the laws of this city. We pray that this city would be as a light on a hill. And we pray for the peace and safety of its residents, its families, its churches, its community. We pray that all that would be done here would be pleasing your sight through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are going to move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I do have a motion? A motion from Commissioner, or Mayor Pro Tem McDonald, do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Robinson? Can we put up the vote? And motion passes seven zero. And before we move on, we did have the sign up sheet here. I did notice there were a couple of people that came in after we pulled it. Did anybody else want to sign up to speak? Okay, then we're going to move on to presentations. I do have a proclamation. Should I come down there and do it? Yes, maybe?
We actually did this last year. It was approached about doing this. And I like the premise. It's really about encouraging our community to go above and beyond. We do have a lot of them that do. I think it's a great reminder for all of us that we all have a responsibility in our community to be part of the solution in one way or another. And so, you know, and it can be little things. I know, you know, a lot of people, if they see a police officer getting a cup of coffee or something, or a military member, they'll go ahead and pay for it or something. Something like that, or if you have a neighbor needing something like that. But I think it's important that it's a good reminder for all of us that we all need to go that extra mile. We all get busy in our lives and get in our little bubbles sometimes, and unintentionally, honestly. So I do have the proclamation. I agree to do it again this year. Whereas Alamo Gordo is a community which acknowledges that special vibrancy exists within the entire community, whether it's individuals, families, go the extra mile, their personal effort, volunteerism, and so on. And whereas Alamo Gordo is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friend, and community. And whereas Alamo Gordo is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas the city of Alamo Gordo acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra mile cities in America and is about to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2024. Now therefore, I, Susan Payne, Mayor of the City of Alamo Gordo, in my view, hereby proclaim November 1st, 2024, as Extra Mile Day in Alamo Gordo, and urge each individual of the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. And again, I thought that was really important. We oftentimes just see the many, but there are people out there who are really trying, and I think it's important. Some of them I see right here in the street, and I think it's important that we acknowledge that. So thank you for that.
And we are going to move on to public comment. I have no one signed up for public comment. And so with that, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Mayor, Commission. I have a few things. With the recent floods in Ruidoso and Roswell, I just wanted to put out there because I've seen a lot of questions. Is the city prepared? When Jerry was hired on Chief Ramitas, he, his, one of his first tasks was to update our hazard mitigation plan, which he took on full force. It has gone up to the state for approval. Once the state signs off on it, it goes to FEMA for approval, and we should have something back by the end of this year. But I think the date is, I think it's the last day of the year. Jerry's real big on life safety measures, and in addition, he's gotten some of his firefighters' trains for water rescue. So I just wanted to put that out there. I've been in contact with the governor's office all day today. They have accepted our invitation to come down here for a town hall. We have two dates. One would be December 9th, 2024 at 1:00, and the second would be January 8th, 2025, about 5:30. So we're working out the logistics on how that's going to work. We're anticipating it's going to be at the TAEZ. The TAEZ have been real accommodating to any requests that we need. So for now, mark your calendars for December 9th and January 8th, and then I'll follow up with an email once we have more specific time. Another thing, Main Street, the Great Blocks Project, we always said we don't know what's under there until we start digging. Well, today we hit a snafu. They hit a pipeline, an old copper line that we didn't know was there. It wasn't, it wasn't on our maps. It wasn't on our radar. So they got it taken care of. But in case you get any complaints that there was a lot of water on 10th Street, because there was a lot of water on 10th Street. And then finally, I just wanted to inform Commission Officer Ferguson's murder trial. There was a docket call today. There's a docket call on the first. So far, it looks like everything's set to go. Jury selection on November the 4th, and then the trial to start immediately after. So that's all I got.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Is that, they're not coming in here? Oh, okay. All right. We are going to move on to Commissioner comments, and I'm going to go ahead and get started because she had to know. We were not going to let this time go by without an announcement. So if you will come up here, please. Thank you. Okay, so for those of you who are not regular attenders or don't know, this is Stephanie Hernandez. She is now Dr. Stephanie Hernandez. I had deserved to clap. She has worked, I always say she's my sister from another mister or something, because our lives are so, I joke around about that. But our lives are very parallel, so I can really relate to her and the things that she's gone through in her life, because I have a similar story. And last year, last year, as she was working on her doctorate, she's been working on it for four years? Four years, four and a half years. I remember when you started it.
All of her life.
Her husband, Angel. Anyway, so she's been working on it for four and a half years. But last year, she was our acting city manager for a time, and during that time, unfortunately, we did have an officer that was killed. And we also had an employee that was killed, and we also had a child that was killed in one of our parts. And during that whole time, I watched her work, and then I know that she was working late, and then I know what she was doing. She was going home, and she was working on her doctorate. And I used to think I should have that kind of stamina. I would need, because there's no way. I value my sleep way too much. But I truly admire that. And so this, it was, I have it on here, the 15th? It's the 15th. I remember that, because I had it in grade. October 15th, she, she did her final, her final project, defense, whatever you want to call it. And she is now Dr. Stephanie Hernandez, and I know that's not the goal I'm aiming for you. So congratulations to you. This is, we got you, okay, so just so everybody knows, we got her a.
Starting a FaceTime call to Serena.
And I slapped Dr. all over everything.
It's new.
I know, I know. And then, because you're always taking notes. Yes. And then, and one got very creative, which I thought was really cute. And you see that? It's Ms., Ms., Mrs., Doctor, actually. Anyway, so that's for your coffee. So congratulations to you. We are super proud of you. And I don't, I, what do you think, Cruz? Is she done?
Oh, I don't know.
Shout out to my husband and my parents for helping me, because I could have done that. I'm telling you, man, you know, she's got a very supportive family, obviously, very great supporters of her. But she does have a son that only has, what, two and a half more years, and then you're going to have to help him with health, so you better do something. All right, well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Does anybody else have anything? No? Okay. I did attend, last week was Domestic Violence Awareness Week. I did attend the Cope.
Open House.
Open House. Yes, thank you. I couldn't, I was trying, I said, it's not a celebration, for sure. The Cope Open House, and I did a proclamation. And then on Thursday, there was a candlelight vigil at the courthouse, and I attended that as well. So October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and so just, yeah, keep that in mind. It's a, it's a huge issue. And so I think it's important that we recognize that. Okay, so if there's nothing else, we will move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they want to pull from the consent agenda?
I just have a question on four and five, so if you'd pull those, I just.
Okay, so we're going to pull four and five. Anybody else? No? All right, let me, before I forget. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve item two, three, and six on the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Paul. Can we put up the vote, please? Okay, motion passes seven zero. We're going to move on to items pulled from the consent agenda. We'll start with item four, consider and act upon the award of public bids, public works bid, I'm sorry, for the Hubbard Drive Bridge. And Commissioner Tapley, you had some questions?
Just was curious when they were going to start, and kind of the, when they're going to start and when they're going to finish, kind of an idea.
It's my first time up here, so. Mayor, Pro Tem, and Commissioners.
Did you say it's your first time up here? Clearly, we don't ask enough questions.
We were taking bets on when you guys were going to pull one of him. He's been so nervous.
Are you talking about for the cemetery, or are you talking about for the?
Uh, four, item four.
Item four?
Which is the Hubbard Drive Bridge.
Hubbard Bridge, so after notice of war today, it's approved. Most likely, I'm going to try to get it started before December. It's about eight months of a project, so.
Eight months.
Hopefully, you get it knocked out before then, because that bridge definitely needs it, so.
And the same for the cemetery?
The cemetery, same thing. I'm trying to get both of these started before December. Usually, it takes me about two weeks after notice of war to get everything started. The only thing with the cemetery is because it is a grant, it will probably take a little bit longer. Just depends on how long the notice of obligation takes.
Was that item five?
So this may be his first, but it won't be his last, because we have over 100 projects going on, so.
I know, I'm like, you've never been up here before, what? Oh, okay. All right, so that answered your question? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
How about on the, on the two estimates we get here, how come we have such a variation?
For which one?
For Hubbard Drive as well. We're on item four. So like clearing, grubbing, we've got one that's showing 35,5, and then one that's showing 7,500.
You know, that's just based off of the contractors. You know, so for the Hubbard Bridge, K E N G, they're actually from Arizona, and the other one's from Albuquerque. And we did do a state preference on Albuquerque, since, you know, they are in state. So we did add that 5%, and even with that 5%, it was still, they were still the lowest bid.
The Arizona company was.
Yeah, and I honestly think that they probably, probably bidded a little bit lower, just because I know they are trying to go into El Paso, the base. They're trying to move more southwest area.
I just typically, when we see stuff like this, you know, two, you know, two, three months from now, you'll be coming to us with change orders because of something they forgot.
Usually, when in my pre-bids, I go over everything. I walk the site with them. I make sure that if they see anything, they ask right there and then, because then that's when I create my addendums. So after the pre-bid, I have about, almost a week and a half to two weeks of questions. They have all that time to ask me questions, so that way we don't have to do a change order. And then from there, we proceed on the project. The only way you'll ever see a change order is if a grant tells me I have to spend a certain amount, and they end up bidding lower than that grant. Or the other way would be if I see something that was unforeseen, kind of like how we saw on New York Street of water line change orders through these projects.
Okay, I just, there's a, there's a lot of variant between the two of them.
Yeah, and that, that's basically just based off of them. I mean, you know, even on other projects, some people are going to put $50,000 for mobilization, some might put $10,000. It just depends on the contractor. I have no control over that part.
Okay.
And I will.
I think with the cemetery as well, you know, they both had the same sole contractor, and.
Can we go ahead? Just keep this item 14. I apologize, but we also have item five after this.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so.
Oh, oh, gotcha.
He's kind of talking about both projects.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
He asked for both, I was kind of just.
Yeah. No, it's just item four.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then I also wanted to mention that our, our process for projects has changed recently. Justin has done a fabulous job of holding contractors to the contracts, reading the contracts, going over the pre-bids thoroughly with them, so that they know their expectations from the city of Alamo Gordo timelines. And so Justin's doing a really good job of trying to make sure that, you know, cultivating relationships, so we get more outsider bidders, so that we can, because we're going to have a lot of projects, and there's only so many contractors in the city, so that we can do several projects at once and hold them to a standard. So our process is, is new, newer, but we're, we're doing a real good job. Just, shout out to Justin and Natalie for, you know, trying to streamline that process a little better.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I see like traffic control number 31 on here. You got one bidder at $98,000, you got one at $10,000.
Yeah, so sometimes contractors have their own in-house.
Or they don't have to lease all their cones and barrels and all that?
Right, yeah, so, you know, one contractor may have to lease it out from Road, Safe Road, from Albuquerque, you know, or one might have everything inside in-house. Just depends on how big their contracting company is. But either way, no matter what they bid on the traffic control, it's 100% on task, on where it's supposed to be.
Hopefully, we won't see any change orders, so.
No, no. Like I said, the only way you'll see a change order is if we see something that we had no clue that was part of the project. Anything else for Hubbard Bridge?
Okay, so we need to, we need to vote on that one, and then we can move to item five.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve item four?
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Robinson. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Can we put up the vote, please? Okay, motion passes seven zero. We'll move on to item five. I know we already talked about it, but we got to go through the motion, so. Consider and act upon the award of public works bid 2024-010, and it is about the Monty Vista Cemetery, the entrance renovations. Did you have any more questions, Commissioner Tapley?
Nope, just the ETA.
Okay.
You got it.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion from Commissioner Tapley to approve item five. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner, can we put up the vote, please? And motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I had known this was your first time, I would have made it way rougher on you. Sorry. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Okay. Yeah, please don't put that in print. I'm kidding. I'm just joking. All right. We're going to move on to new business, item seven, consider and act upon approving the construction of a new nadatorium sprung structure versus brick and mortar building. I know that there has been some question about this, and I'm just going to review really quick for those of you who are potentially watching. And I don't know how long ago, maybe a couple months ago, when that presented, maybe a couple months ago, I think.
I think the first time we met in February, then we met in June.
Holy, it seemed like, okay. All right, well, a couple times this year, we talked about this, and there, I think there was potentially a field trip or something, and there was a question about the nadatorium basically is building a new pool. And there was a presentation done, if everybody remembers. And then there was a question about how we were going to pay for it. I can't remember all the numbers off the top of my head, but what I do want to clarify is that there is a question on the ballot, and it is to potentially re-dedicate, is the word, rededicate, I think it's $4 million from, is that right?
To rededicate the $4 million and the GRT tax.
And the GRT tax from the, from what is currently being being put into our LITA account, or being designated to the LITA account, and rededicating that tax for this nadatorium. We, at the time, had the option to just do that. We decided, I think collectively, we all decided that we would put it out to the voters and let the voters decide. And so I just, I wanted to clarify that, that that is something that we could have done without the consent of the voters, because we do have a letter from the state that says we could have done that. However, in the interest of full transparency, we decided to let the voters decide, and that is what you see on the ballot. And so the, the nadatorium itself, we're hoping will get built either way. The question is the way we pay for it. The pool, there's no question that the pool needs to be replaced. I think everybody knows that. We saw that from the presentation. However, it is expensive, and so one of the thoughts was to rededicate that tax and use that, that remaining money. But because, because we wanted to make sure that the citizens who, obviously, I mean, we all contribute to the tax, we're all citizens. But, but because we wanted them to have a say in it, we did put it on the ballot. So I just, I want to be very clear about that, because it's important that everybody understands that this is not, you know, I know people see it, and the first thing they think is bond, or it's going to cost more money, or whatever. It, it is, it is not going to cost more money. It is a question of whether that's what you want to do with that money. And so with that, I know you have some information for us, but I did think it was really important that we clarify that, that we are trying to be as transparent as possible, which is why we want the voters to decide. Okay? All right, very good. Now.
Thank you.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, Dr. Hernandez.
So I'm here tonight with all the experts, so the purpose of this meeting is to discuss the actual structure that's going to cover the pool. So we've talked about sprung structure, we talked about brick and mortar, I'm sure you guys have been bombarded with all the information in your agenda packet. So I have here with me all the experts, I have Rob Price from ASA Architects, I have George Dynas from Councilman Huntsaker, I have Simon Todd from Sprung Structures, and I have Regina Michaud, our aquatics expert and coordinator. So, just to also clarify and put on the record, a nadatorium is a facility that houses one or more swimming pools, because I, I know I've had a lot of questions about that, too. So, staff would like the commission to approve the sprung str- sprung structure building to cover the pool. Since our last meeting regarding that, um, building, um, we have offered a field trip to the commissioners to go and look at a sprung structure. It's not over a swimming pool, but it was to the Red Cloud Golf Course. Commissioner McDonald went with us on that, um, field trip, and I know Mr. Robinson had informed me the he's familiar with that building, and I, I believe there's a few golfers that are also familiar with that building. We met with their manager to discuss issues they have experienced with that building. They actually love it, it's just, it was supposed to be a temporary building, it's been there for fifteen years, almost. They've built two brick and mortar buildings right next to it for their maintenance and golf cart buildings. Those two buildings are half the age, they've already had to repaint them, and they've already had to do roof work on both of those buildings. Never had to do anything with that sprung structure. So, um, they've remodeled the interior a couple of times, and it's just proved to be a lot lower maintenance for them than their two much newer buildings. It's supposed to be washed every once in a while, they've never washed it, not once, so if you go into the pro shop and you look up, it's fifteen years' worth of accumulation, so. Because they literally don't do anything with it, but they love that building. We also had a, um, a meeting with the Kearns Ocker Park in South Jordan, Utah, who have a nadatorium sprung structure. They love that building. It's been up for almost fifteen years, it's extremely low, uh, maintenance. They've had to do some hardware replacement, such as on the doors, because they have the big overhead doors, and those get used a lot, which would be typical for any building, no matter what we put up. They've also had to replace their LCD monitors, because they have big for scorekeeping and things in their facility. And they've had to change a ventilation tube from the original to a cloth tube, so their lesson learned is ours to know before we start. The patrons love it, it's brightly lit, has the outdoor feel, um, has large, uh, side doors to open, to give that indoor-outdoor feeling. Management loves it because it's low maintenance, they have happy customers, has great ventilation, and it's, um, was less expensive to build, and much less expensive to maintain than, uh, a brick and mortar building. They also have, um, a really quick build time, so, uh, much, much quicker than a, a s- a traditional brick and mortar. I do have, uh, a slideshow, I think I know how to work this thing. So, um, a nadatorium, again, it's a building or a complex that contains one or more swimming pools. Our old pool, I have a lot of questions, a lot of people ask questions about our old pool, it's, uh, currently twenty-nine years old, it was constructed in nineteen ninety-five. We have cracking in the southeast corner, it has the, uh, the delamination of the pool deck, corrosion in the underwater expansion joint, leaking water in the mechanical rooms, uneven water level, gaps in the deck drainage covers, stains and etching on the pool surface, all things that come with an old pool that's an outdoor pool. We were asked to get the information on rehabbing the current pool and putting a cover on it. So it's an old pool, with, we would spend virtually the same amount of money to rehab our current pool, and still not have, be able to have spectator space. So it's gonna cost, if we cover it with a brick and mortar, it's ten million dollars. Again, there's no room for expansion in its current location, we can't bump out anywhere. It would, uh, really restrict our ability to have our, we could still have emergency exits, but we wouldn't have, spectators wanna be on the deep end where all the action happens. There's no room for that expansion there. If we built a building over, uh, our current pool and rehabbed it, the building would probably outlast that pool, because you're looking, we might get lucky and get twenty years out of that pool. We'd still have no spectator seating, um, pool would likely fail, um, well, I put, we put soon, but it would fail after rehabilitation, just because, I mean, it's, you're just rehabbing it, it's, you're not, it's not a new pool. The proposed new facility, um, is a twenty-three thousand plus square foot facility, sixty-three thou- uh, six thousand three hundred, uh, plus square feet of pool. It would have zero depth entry, which our new, our current pool does not have, it's not very all-purpose user-friendly for the elderly or the disabled. It's also two, the new pool would be two pools in one, we would have a rentable space, uh, all the same things we kinda have now, except we'd be able to offer those year-round classes, lifeguard training, specifically designed, um, swim instruction for the shallow end, we could do aerobic classes and things like that for water. We'd be able to meet some of those needs of our surrounding community, including our swim team. And of course, the, the main purpose is, uh, year-round access. Sprung structures, they come in a ton of different designs, and different, um, sizes, we can order whatever size we want. Has a, the frame of the building has a fifty-year prerado warranty. It's easy to maintain, it has an open-air feel, great ventilation, it's popular with users. Disadvantages, it's a, a new and different facility, and maybe some people don't want something new and different. Sprung structure maintenance is minimal, no painting to requi- uh, required to maintain it, no guttering, no roof replacement, uh, in the sense of the, like a traditional building. Door and window hardware periodic replacement due to moisture and corrosion. Uh, panels may need replaced or patching over time, and these buildings do come with patch kits and all those good things. A brick and mortar, it has to require the, uh, painting every five to seven years, roof replacement ten, fifteen years or so, gutters and downspouts need maintenance and cleaning, exterior surface may require repairs due to weathering, just restuccoing. Interior finishes require regular cleaning and maintenance. Longevity, uh, lifespan typically fifty years or more for the sprung structures, the durability, um, to, it has the durability to withstand all of our harsh, uh, weather conditions and our heavy wind loads. So Fort Bliss uses our, uh, the sprung structures, Holloman's putting up str- uh, these sprung structures out there right now, they're building, I think, three or four, four right now. They just have a lot more minimal maintenance requirements, and that's a huge part of Parks and Recreation's budget right now, is just maintaining what we have, so trying to get, squeeze some of those saving dollars there. And these buildings are also somewhat modular, so if we decide to expand, it's fairly easy to expand these buildings into any shape or design that we should choose to go with. Brick and mortar lifespan varies depending on factors like construction quality, materials and maintenance, durability, uh, it, it's kinda dependent, it's susceptible to wear and tear, obviously. And maintenance requires regular maintenance to preserve that lifespan, much like any building. But it also includes painting, roof repairs, and just general upkeep. I don't feel like I need to read the whole thing, but cost-effectiveness, um, all of our cost savings are really in the sprung structure, it has a low upfront cost, uh, has long-term, uh, savings in the maintenance department, and we just feel like the construction of that building would have a higher return of, uh, higher returns on, for us, over time. Whereas, um, a brick and mortar building, it's gonna take a lot longer to recoup our investment into that building. Sprung, to recap, advantages, lower initial costs for the sprung, ma- minimal maintenance, longer lifespan. Disadvantages, and I think this is probably the biggest one, is that some people just may not like that kind of building, and it may just, it's, it's something new and different that Almagordo doesn't have, so. Brick and mortar advantages, it's familiar in appearance, potential high resale value if we were to sell off Oregon Park, for whatever reason. Disadvantages, it's higher initial cost as far as construction, has a significant maintenance requirement and those costs. Shorter lifespan, it's not really a lifespan, it's just, paint job is gonna be shorter, the roof life is shorter. And typically, they, they're a little bit more leaky, as far as energy costs go. We recommend the sprung structure, uh, and there's all of our, uh, key reasons for this, it's the cost-effectiveness, durability, energy efficiency, efficiency, and adaptability. I do wanna say also, uh, we had our New Mexico Recreation and Park Conference in Hobbs at the Core. Everybody talks about the Core, it is a lovely facility, has a massive indoor aquatic center. So we were able to spend a couple of days there talking to those folks. Here's our key takeaways on that, it's a brick and mortar building, has lots of headspace, you'd think lots of ventilation, it is, is very well ventilated, but they feel like it's not ventilated enough. It has giant windows, but they also had to, to, to let light in, but they had to put coverings on those windows, and it's really beautiful, but they had to put those coverings on the windows so they didn't cook their swimmers from the light through the glass windows. And they, this build, the Core is only six years old, and they are already on the verge of spending thousands of dollars. If you go to the Core and you look at, say, the stairway that goes from the observation deck down to the pool deck, there's massive amounts of rust and bubbling of the paint, and these are specially coated for nadatoriums. So six years in, and they're looking at thousands of dollars of mitigation and maintenance to try to combat that rust and stuff, so. Anybody have any questions? I have the experts, you can ask anything you'd like.
I do have, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. If I remember right, the, were the beams aluminum, or were they galvanized, the interior structure of that?
Yeah, you have to come up, turn the mic. And if you'll state your name for the record, just so Dylan.
Simon Todd, Commissioner Tapley, they are aluminum beams.
Okay, that's what I remember.
And then any, um, steel component would be hot-dip galvanized.
Commissioner Burnett?
The current pool now, what were the hours of operation?
Regina Misha, Aquatics Coordinator for the city. Currently, we are open about six months out of the year, April through, um, the end of October. That's dependent on our current facility's capability of opening, this year we opened two months late because of maintenance issues. When we are open, we go full-tilt, so during the summer months, we are open seven days a week. Weekdays are open six-thirty a.m. until seven p.m. at night, sometimes, dependent on, um, private rentals, we'll go as late as eight-thirty, nine o'clock.
And as far as the pool?
That is the pool.
That is the pool.
That is the pool, so during those summer months, we're going seven days a week, six-thirty, and then as late as, every day we go till seven p.m., and then on the days that we have private rentals, we'll go till eight, eight-thirty, nine o'clock sometimes. So, on the shoulder seasons, when it's not summer break, when the kids aren't out, we still go six days a week, we're still open at six-thirty for early morning swimmers. We move into afternoon sessions between nine-thirty and one-thirty, uh, for our seniors and our adult fitness swimmers. Homeschool P E is in the afternoon, and then we'll close down for a little bit, and we open up back again at four-thirty and run till six-thirty, seven o'clock at night with a combination of swim lessons, um, public swim, and swim team practices. Right now, we're only able to offer the school one month of swim practices due to the fact we're seasonal, we don't have a cover on our pool. It just gets too cold to keep it running, we start to burn out our heaters and our pumps because we're running twenty-four, seven to try to keep the water at a temperature that can be used.
And then, how much was the cost to revamp our pool? I don't remember that number.
To revamp it and to put a cover on it?
Just to revamp, as far.
The revamp was around six or seven million.
Oh, is it, okay. Okay.
And I'm gonna add, if I can, I'll add on to that, we can revamp it for roughly around eight million. However, if we revamp it, it's not gonna eliminate some of our bigger issues, which is a sixteen-inch, uh, drop from our deck down to the pool. We have one set of steps that's less than three feet in width, so we, our seniors have problems getting in and out of our pool, our toddlers have big trouble getting out of our pool. Our swim team has a huge issue getting in and out of the pool, because you gotta push yourself up that sixteen inches. It's also a safety concern for us, because if we ever have anyone with a spinal, uh, injury, and/or if we have an unconscious swimmer in the pool and have to get him out, we have to deal with that sixteen-inch gap. It's much safer to come down to where it's a flush gutter to get people in and out of that pool if they're having problems.
And then, in the event that the reallocation doesn't get passed, what do we do then?
We'll keep operating the best we can with the pool that we have.
Then the commission is gonna have to, will come back and ask you guys to make some decisions, if we're gonna go for a go-bond, uh, you guys can pass, uh, we have some additional, um, amount that you can pass without going for referendum, so that we can maybe bond, um, so, there'll be additional options that can come to you, but it'll cost additional money, this was the best option to minimize the impact on the citizens, so this is why we tried this one first.
Because, in this last week, I've heard numerous people that are not happy with this at all. Even though it's not costing them any more money, they're not, they're just not happy in general, that we wanna build.
Is there a specific?
They haven't said specifically, uh, they're just, they're not for it, a lot of people aren't. Not for any specific reason, not that, that I don't, some of them I don't think understand that the G R T was just getting reallocated, it's not an additional tax, but there, there's.
I think, yeah, I think that that's a lot of the problem, which is why I tried to explain it, because this is a really great option, um, and I just, I don't know, now, I still feel like we need to talk to the schools, probably, um, I don't know if we have or not, but I, I still feel like there has to be, because the schools will obviously use the pool a lot, but.
So, when we have spoken to the pools, and just to kinda clarify what we ask of them, because if we ask them to put in money, then we're talking about a joint-use pool usage, and then we have, you know, mom and dad fighting over who controls the pool, because they're also gonna, they don't have the cash, they'd probably have to bond. We have spoken, um, at length with them, and I think it was just the better option that we keep the way, the structure the way it is, we have a J P A with those schools, they pay us for usage of the pool, and where the city maintains full control of it. And as far as Commissioner Burnett's, um, comment, we do have a website that's dedicated to this, and I think it's just trying to, we got the information out a little bit late, and now we have the Parks and Rec Board, um, several people who are trying to help us to, um, educate the public on what the use of this fund is, what this tax is, that it's not costing more money, that we cannot dedicate this to the streets fund, or we can't dedicate this to reduce water bills, um, you know, there's different pots of money. So I think it's just communication, and I think we're, we're starting to get that out there a little bit more, and we're working with some of our partners. NMSUA is gonna, is helping us kinda spread the word, schools are also helping us spread the word, um, so we got the information out a little later than we'd like to, but we're trying to, we're, we're trying to speak directly to the people who are opposed to this.
I would also like to comment, um, I'm actually working the early voting, and a lot of people, they don't know what a nadatorium is. So they have been, uh, some of the people have been explaining, uh, to them, so I don't know how much, um, understanding, I said, when you, uh, go to vote, usually people will look up the meaning of the word and, and try to figure out what's happening, but that's what I heard today, that they were at the site they were, and I'm at, um, the fairgrounds, and they were explaining to the people that came in, because they didn't know what it was that we're voting for. So I, I think the communication is probably gonna be needed for the next couple of weeks to get the word out. So I, I think the communication is probably going to be needed for the next couple of weeks to get the word out.
Yeah, I think that we put the definition on the website because that was the one thing that people were asking me. So that's why we put it on the website. We have it on our socials, put it in this presentation. And we've just been trying to tell people it's just a big fancy word for a building with a swimming pool in it.
And I just have one last question. Uh, the timeline, if it does get approved, both the four million and this, what is, what does our start date look like?
The moment we have money in hand, I will be getting ahold of these guys to finish, to solidify our plan and it, I'm not sure what the build timeline will look like because it, I think it depends on a lot of our subcontractors that will be building it. And, and obviously, yes, the structure that we put over it.
But it will still be less time than the brick and mortar?
If we do the sprung structure, it will, the build time will be significantly decreased. Then the, then the lengthy part is digging the hole for them and, and doing the pool.
I think the one thing that I was impressed with about the sprung system is that it can maintain, uh, a temperature, um, all year round. It does not matter whether it's hot or cold. And I, I tell you, that living here in the Southwest, I think that's one of the biggest, um, problems that we have here is just deterioration and just, uh, breaking down, just because, well, like my mom used to say, even iron wears out sometimes. So that's what's happening.
And I wanted to say something to Commissioner Burnett. So the rehabilitation of the current pool, it's not just the pool that needs to be completely rehabilitated, it's the entire pump house. Our surge pit is leaking, you know, it's, we've got some issues in there, it needs new heaters. So it's, it's a lot more than just refurbishing that pool.
No, I, I completely understand. I just, it was just a question that was asked of me.
Well, that way you have the information.
And I think that particularly in our city, there is a little bit of caution because automatically everybody thinks taxes are going to go up or it's going to cost them more money. And I think, you know, it's up to us, it's up to, and, and I know that there are a lot of citizens out there that are doing some education and talking to people. And so you're always going to have people that are very, right, or concerned or absolutely not, I'm not voting on X, Y and Z. I don't really care, whatever. Um, but you know, this is a good thing and, and I hope that people do their research instead of just like carte blanche, just shut it down. Do your research because, um, this is not just for us. That's why I was mentioning earlier, we do need to talk to the schools. And I understand, you know, you, you do make a good point and I understand that. But, but they need to help us get the word out too because this is, this benefits their kids. I mean, it benefits our, our, our high school students. We have a, I don't think people understand the kind of swim team that we have. I mean, it's, it's pretty, um, it's a pretty robust swim team. It's not just a couple of kids. And so it's important that, that our citizens understand this is for them, this is for our senior citizens. I can't tell you how many of them complained to me that the pool's not open long enough during the year. And, and so, you know, there's an equal amount. And, and so, you know, I would just encourage everybody, get the word out, talk about it and, and, you know. I mean, I, I think one way or another, this will get built. The question is when.
Right. And, and I also want, kind of on that same note, so our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board put, uh, sent a letter of support for the sprung structure and the nadatorium in general. I think our swim team, we have quite a few of those, some of them had planned on being here tonight and they weren't able to make it. We do have, uh, an adult swim group that also, um, we did remind them to be here, but I don't see any of them here either. But they, you know, we do have quite a few folks that has reached out. I've given them all the information. They think this is a really cool thing. I just wish they would have been able to be here tonight, but we do have, we do have quite a few folks that are, really would like this, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, a lot of the people that are, um, in the swim classes, uh, and I'm not going to say seniors, but, um, older adults, uh, are going to Las Cruces and they are using the swim, um, you know, facilities over there. And, um, I actually went to Las Cruces to see that facility. They have two swimming pools and they are huge. And, uh, I, 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 I think when we are sending our people somewhere else, we might be tempting them to move there too. So let's, I, I think we should try to make something a little bit better for the citizens here.
And I, yeah, I do think that that's the key. I'm sorry, Commissioner Paul.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. I don't know if City Manager or Belinda might be able to answer this. So if this measure that's, or question that's on the ballot fails, what financing options are out there? What does that look like?
So.
To fund this project? Because the, the way that I'm seeing it now, if this passes and is approved tonight, that's giving approval that this nadatorium project is moving forward regardless of what happens with that question on the ballot. Is that correct?
So you, you, commission approved a nadatorium. Um, we are asking you to approve the structured type. So to answer both yours and Commissioner Burnett's, if it passes, if it does pass and November 4th and the results, once the results are certified, that's when we can go straight to NMFA and say, we have a funding source to approve any bonding that needs to happen. So that's a best case scenario. We can get that going, you know, as soon as those results are, um, certified. If it does not pass, um, we would have to go out for probably a, a go bond or a GRT increase. So a go bond increases the property taxes or we still have an amount that we can pass, um, to get a GRT, um, a GRT bonding. So.
And that one we can just pass.
Um, I, I'm, I think the GO, the, that has to go out to voters, but that does increase the taxes.
Right. And we, I, obviously we don't want to do that. I get it, but, but it's, it is something that we could do.
If the voters shoot this down, it's going to look real bad if we turn right around and do it anyway.
Well, no, that's why I said, we obviously don't want to do that.
If they do, and the reality is if they do not vote for it and the commission chooses not to move forward on the other two options, then we will extend the pool as best that we can, but it's going to come a point where we're going to have to shut it down because we can't keep pouring money into it. The amount that we, the amount that they gave you, the eight million-ish, whatever it was, that, that's what we know. It doesn't include what we don't know, just like the great blocks. We don't know what kind of thing is underneath, what else is failing. We, we know what we know, but with every project we have, there's a lot of stuff that pops up and the cost just keeps increasing and increasing as do the cost to maintain it because everything is getting more and more expensive.
And you still have an outdoor pool that's only open half the year.
Right. No, I get it. And I am never in favor of raising taxes if we don't.
It says right here though, that the cost of rehab current pool, two options, with brick and mortar covering is 10 million, spring, sprung structure covering is five million. So is it five million to revamp the pool and cover it? That's on your slideshow right here.
I, I'm sorry. I have to look at my notes.
The number eight million keeps popping up, but it says five million, so.
Thought I had that in my notes. Right there. Oh, yeah.
So is it five million?
Yeah, actually that might be a typo because I believe the re, the revamping of the pool was seven million, at least seven.
To rehab it, with the sprung structure, five, to rehab the pool by itself and don't do anything else to it, about half that.
So two and a half million to revamp the pool? And that gets us, how many, how many years does that get us? If we revamp the existing pool with a sprung structure? It'll only give us five more years?
Five, you might even stretch 10 out of it.
Maybe 10.
Covering it is what the, helps buy it a little bit more.
I'm sorry, were, were you done with your questions?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Oh, go ahead. As far as the sprung structure goes, how do you, how do you insulate one of those? I mean, you, you say we're going to heat and cool this thing and keep a consistent temperature, but, you know, based off of this piece of fabric that's in this little brochure, I don't see how you heat and cool that without any sort of, some sort of insulation in there.
Sure. So that, uh, piece of material you have is our exterior architectural membrane. And then on the inside of that is a layer of R25 insulation. And then on the interior is another layer of that same polyurethane membrane. So think of it as a sandwich.
How do we get around the building codes on that? This might be a Rob question, but you know, typically on a, on a structure right now, they're, they're requiring an R38 on a roof and a minimum of an R19 on a wall. How do we get around the R-value issue?
Yeah. Twenty-five, well, from grade to peak. And if the building code, uh, requires a higher R-value, we can use a double layer insulation.
So we can get it like an R50 if you do a double layer in there on the, so I don't know how that would work on this since the walls and roof are kind of a, a joint deal, but, uh, and then what kind of, I don't know, I just worry about this, this material, you know what I mean? I just know how our climate is and, I didn't have a chance to go to Las Cruces to look at that, but, uh, those are just a few of the questions I have. But if we were to just revamp the pool, build the sprung structure over the existing pool and then put a plan in place where we start pigeonholing money away to do this? Because I, I'm kind of along the lines of Commissioner Burnett, I'm hearing a lot of negativity about this because people think that the taxes are going to go up, you know, and, and if we do a GO bond, it's going to have to go back on the ballot that has to be approved by the voters. If they shoot this one down, they're definitely probably going to shoot the other one down, so. And then on top of that, is this something that we could discuss after we know whether the money's approved? You know, is then we have a little bit better idea of what money we have, what we can borrow with what we've got GRT to pledge?
So if you remember, we came to you initially with, um, I think it was, uh, Chris and, um, John. And we presented those options. And then we presented after that because commission asked us to go back and kind of figure out a little, another plan because the thought process was not to increase, um, taxes. So that's when we brought to you the second option is to rededicate this tax. So I, I guess it's, everything's up for a commission. I mean.
It just seems a little premature because we don't know whether we have the money or not. And we're sitting here trying to pick what we're going to build, but we don't know really what our budget is or what we're going to have to spend on it. You know, um, if it passes, then we have the four million plus whatever we can bond out with. What is that, an eighth of a percent that we have? So generates what, a million two a year?
I believe it's a point one two five.
Yeah. So it's like a million two, million four a year, something like that. You know, so does that, does that make sense to everybody?
So if we drag this out, it's, we're just kind of pushing it too because, you know.
We're literally pushing it, what, two weeks? The election's in two weeks? And then we'll know kind of what we have to spend and what direction we can head.
So the initial price of this pool is a 10 million. That's our total bonding capacity without passing tax. If you recall, um, the decision was not to bond out completely in case an emergency comes up. So that's why we kept it at the $10 million. Like, that's what our budget was, to stay within those means.
Wasn't that the GO bond of the 10 millions on the GO side?
That's what we have capacity, our bonding capacity.
Because it was 12 million something total, correct?
I think we had 10, 12 and 15 depending. They didn't do a full-on, um, assessment of our bond, our bonding capacity that we kind of based it on the last one that we had in 2019, 2020, something like that. Because they, we were just presenting options to the commission.
I thought this was a different, like a different pool of money since we're pledging a GRT rather than a property tax.
Yeah, it is a different pool of money.
We're still limited on the, the, the GRT bond as well?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because we only have a, we can only pass up to two, 2.5 total and we're at 2.05.
Okay.
So yeah, we're, we're, either way, we are pushing capacity. This was the best option to go for. And I know that it seems that there's gaining a lot of negativity, but we're getting a lot of positivity too. So you can't out, you can't, you know. It don't matter what we're going to do, we're going to get the negative.
There's a lot of people that are still pretty hot over the water rate increase. And then I've seen a lot of comments about, hey, this is another Fund Center debacle, uh, you know.
Yeah, but that's social media.
It is social media, but it's still people that are constituents that do vote.
I understand that, but there's 31,000 people in our city and.
And 10% of them will vote in this election. Actually, if we're lucky, maybe 19.
10% of them may vote, but when you're talking about 50 or 60 people on social media, I can't.
Can you tell how many people you utilize the pool in a season?
Yeah. So within a season, we average, oops, sorry. Within a season, we average around 19,500, um, people coming in, if you count every day, everybody coming in. So we serve a lot of people within that six months. If we can make it around to a year-round pool, that serves more populations because we can offer year-round, um, swim lessons, which right now we have a very brief window when we're trying to teach kids how to swim, be safe in the water. Um, it also opens it up to swim team. It opens us up to youth groups coming in during the, um, the off-season. We can barely accommodate school groups coming in because we only have a little bit of a window at the end of the, um, spring, early summer, when they're still in school and can come for a field trip. So we open up a lot of, um, access to people that don't generally get to use of a pool because we go year-round.
And can we do, are we going to be able to do, uh, competitions or tournaments or whatever?
Yes, yes. We meet the requirements.
Swimming, a swim meet, yes.
Yes, we meet the requirements to hold small swim meets, so.
Which we're not currently able to do, are we?
We, we could actually add our pool, but we have no spectator space. We, so it would be a closed, um, swim meet. So yeah, parents, everybody, you know, extended families that want to come and watch would not be able to do so at this point in time.
So I just hate to lose that fact that we serve almost 20,000 people in a six-month season over a handful of negative comments that we are working very hard to communicate. And when we do communicate with them, you know, there are some people, we're never going to change their mind, no matter what we do.
And it's not, it's not that we shouldn't take them seriously. Of course we should take them seriously. We, we should take everybody's comments seriously. I'm just saying that the totality of it, when you look at it, that's not, it's not that many people can par. I know that I've gotten a lot of positive comments. I've listened to people, I was in a restaurant the other day and one was like, I'll never vote for a tax. And the other one was like, you've got to, we need a new swimming pool. And I'm like, as long as they don't know who I am, we're good to go here. But, but, I mean, I've heard those conversations and, and it, it really is about education. And I think as, as commissioners, we have an obligation to educate people. I mean, we're the ones that said we wanted it on the ballot. We're the ones that agreed to put it on the ballot. So we have an obligation to educate people. If they don't understand, that's our job to help. I, I mean, obviously we ask the citizens, but it's our job as, as commissioners to, to help people to understand what it is we're trying to accomplish. This is not, you know, I.
It's two separate issues though.
It's about as transparent as we can get. I mean, I don't know how much more transparent we can be, so.
The nadatorium on, on the ballot is one thing and yes, that is, try to be transparent and educate people. But picking this tonight, you know, it's, you know, it's pointless. This whole discussion come two weeks from now may be pointless if the ballot, or if the, you know, the, the question doesn't pass. So that's kind of where I'm at on it is, is let's see if it passes and then decide what we're going to do with it.
I think the other issue is with that, as far as the voters is, I've talked about 15 people and they've already voted because they didn't have the information beforehand of knowing what it actually was for. So I mean, you're, I think the problem is, is for one, we didn't get it out early enough so that they could actually do the research and they've already voted on it and they've already voted no. So I think that's the other issue is that we didn't get it out in, in a timely manner.
Uh, yeah, I don't, I, I, that could be true, but I'm just saying that I've talked to an awful lot of people.
It's the people that I've talked to that they've said, I've already voted on it and voted no.
I get it. But I, I've talked to an awful lot of people that are very supportive of this, so.
I'm, I'm not saying that there's not people that are supportive of it. I'm, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying there are a majority of people that are already voted no because they didn't have the information.
Are we factoring in the survey that was done earlier for the, you know, if they, uh, you know, talked about what they wanted in El Magordo? Is that still factored in?
Yes. So that was part of our master plan study and overwhelmingly, one of the biggest things was the sw, a swimming pool. And around year-round access swimming pool was very, very prominent in that survey as far as popularity and who voted for that. Um, I also want to say, so when you speak to your constituents, and this is what we, what I tell people when I talk to them, a swimming pool isn't, because a lot of people think it's just for the kids, you know, I'm never going to use it. But that's not actually true. It's used by a, a, the spectrum of society. And hospitals, colleges, businesses use recreational facilities such as swimming pools as recruitments to get quality employees to come to your town and to work in those facilities. It, to work in their hospital or their doctor's office or whatever, uh, service that, you know, they're providing. So I, I just want to say that. And as far as kind of, I, I get what you're.
So I just want to say that, and as far as kind of, I get what you're saying about kind of putting the cart before the horse. But if you decide tonight on what structure we can put over it, and I'm going to be positive here. When it passes this election and we get it, that's one less thing that we have to then come back and redo all of this all over again. Because you have, now the information is going to change. These guys came from Texas and Arizona and other places, over the mountains, to to come here tonight. To be able to answer the questions so that you could make a, ask the questions and make an informed decision. So yes, it may be putting the cart before the horse, but then hopefully, when we cross this hurdle in a couple of weeks. Then we can really get moving on getting the final designs and get started. So that's kind of my thought process there. I mean, I get your, I get your, what you're saying. And I don't necessarily disagree, but since we're here.
The sprung structure will be over the actual pool, but all the other part of this facility, what kind of construction is that going to be? Is it going to be?
It can be either or, it can be sprung structure as well to further help with the budget, or it can be a typical brick and mortar.
Brick and mortar, metal building, CMU, whatever, whatever we decide on that. It's not set in stone yet.
No, it's, what you're seeing is basically a preliminary design. We're kind of pushing just so that we can get more mileage for our dollars over the long term. We're kind of pushing, maybe we'll have a brick and mortar facade, or maybe we go full sprung structure, so that's kind of.
Some cost in that area. I wasn't thinking metal building more, given the width of all that L that goes around it.
Be more better like CMU or, okay. For for like the locker room area and those rooms in the back?
Certain variety of options for that area of the building. The sprung is a is a useful scenario over the pool because it's high. That's that's the deal, it's so it's so tall.
What the aluminum frames for this, what's, what size are they?
Sure.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, no, after we break a 90-foot wide threshold, we start using an eight-by-12 aluminum beam.
Eight-by-12, is this like an I-beam or?
Yes, sir, I-beam.
Okay. And how do like your end walls and stuff, how do those frame? Like, do they have I-beam walls?
They have aluminum uprights on the flat ends of the structure. So yeah, they're they're not I-beams, but they're just aluminum uprights.
Like a four-inch square tubing, quarter-inch thick or?
Exactly.
I've got another question. I'm not the smartest person in the room. So if this question does not pass, what are we looking at at that point to try and fund this? And how much longer is that going to be? Because we can sit here and decide on sprung versus brick and mortar. But if we're another year or two out from that, project costs are going to increase. What are we looking at for a budget on this thing? So just.
Sorry, like I said, we we stayed within our bonding capacity just to ensure that we could have some funding for this. So the reason we were doing both of these simultaneously is so that we would love to be able to have this open. At the season of 2026. And that's why we're kind of doing everything instead that way. Once you approve the brick and mortar, the design gets finalized, or the sprung structure, whichever one. It gets finalized, the vote happens, we're ready to hit N M F A. If it, what was the second part of your question? If it doesn't pass, what's the timeline? So if it doesn't pass, you still make the decision on brick and mortar or sprung structure. They still finalize the design, we bring in our bond people, Chris and John, to tell you, these are your funding options. These are your funding availability. As it is designed right now, we have the capacity to do bonding if it doesn't pass. Because that was the initial, that was the initial plan. So that will, that will drag it out a little bit. I I think it would have to go on the ballot, which would be 2025, November of 2025, if we do a property tax or GRT.
You guys had mentioned too, the four million from 1005 that we're looking at transferring over or reallocating. Can we reallocate that in the event that this doesn't pass? Can we reallocate that money without a vote of the people?
Say that again?
The the four million from Fund 1005?
So ideally, what would happen, yes.
Can we reallocate that without a vote of the people?
So ideally, what would happen is this is going to sunset. If we don't, if it doesn't pass, the tax would sunset. Once, once that happens, the commission would decide how you want it to spend, how you want it to allocate that money.
When does it sunset, though? I mean?
December of 2025.
December of 25?
Yes, sir.
So we have a whole other full year though than before we could allocate that without a vote? I was just thinking if it if it fails to pass, we could still allocate the four million because that money's not going to get spent anywhere else. And then we're only a million shy of being able to at least revamp and put a structure over our existing pool. If that makes sense, but. I I personally, I've been through a couple of GO bond votes through the years and the there. Especially when we just did what we did with the water rates, I think we're going to have a tough time getting it passed.
I don't disagree.
We're going to have a tough time and like Commissioner Burnett stated, we didn't get the information out there early enough. So I think there's a lot of misinformation out there. People feel that it's, we're going to raise our taxes when it's really not.
But that's why we did a full-on marketing campaign. It's on Hulu, it's on Disney, it's on everywhere. We're reaching out, we have all of our partners.
I know it's on of all places, I'm not even on this, but my son is, and he said, I saw it on Instagram.
I haven't seen it at all.
He said he saw it on Instagram and asked me about it, so.
We will more than gladly send you the link so you can post it on your Facebook.
I don't post city business on my Facebook, so.
And and so we're working with our partners, like I said, the school, NMSUA. We're helping with kind of get the word out for their bond, they actually have a GO bond on the ballot. So I mean, I, like I said, we started a little late, but we didn't start too late. I mean, as we were up in live, I think early voting started the ninth, we were up in voting, up in that week. So we didn't start that late to do it.
I think that there are a lot more people than we than we think that actually do know about this and support it. I really do. I know that we all tend to get in our little circles and talk to our few people and we think, oh, man, this is just so negative. But when I think of the whole city, I think there are a lot of people out there that are not just supportive, but excited about it, so.
And and the rec center and all of P and R actually has been doing a lot of word of mouth. Regina talks to the swim team, just our regular patrons to help spread the word. We'd love it if you guys would help champion the the cause also, if you talk to people. Now you guys have a lot more information, hopefully, and and good information that you didn't have when you got here today. But yeah, we'd we'd love for you guys to be our champions.
NMSUA has their bond and it's not going to increase taxes, and they're having just as difficult a time as we are. It it's it's nothing new.
I think there's five or six other bond questions on the ballot too, isn't there?
Yes.
There's a lot of them.
State bonds.
Yes.
A lot of them are pretty, or they're just routine, I mean, I hate to say it as that, but you see them all the time. It's the library bonds and the higher education bonds and they're, they're always on the ballot and.
So it seems like we're getting hit hard, but it it's just the nature of what it is, I mean. We could have had this information in the voters' hands three months ago and it would still be the same because it's just, it's the nature of the situation. We're, like I said, we're trying really hard to get all that info. I mean, we did a full four Fast and Furious marketing campaign and we have anybody who speaks positively. We are sending them out there with literature, here's the website, here's the facts on the GRT tab. All we can do is what we can do.
And I think we have to look at who has been voting. And so I I haven't seen a lot of, you know, under, I want to say under 55. I haven't seen too many under 55 voting, and I got the record. So they were saying that the the seniors that are 55-plus have really been knocking it down this year. So there's still a lot of people out there to vote.
And there's a lot of them that use the pool, so. All right, does anybody else have any questions? Thoughts, questions?
I think it was a good discussion. I I remember a couple of years ago when the school district had their bond. They were everywhere. I went to three or four meetings and they were talking about and pushing, and there was an excitement there, there really was. And for us who don't live on social media and TikTok and. But the partners that you talked about, the swimmers and the teachers and the people who use the pool and people. Every place else, there was so much excitement about that bond. And I think we missed it by, just by using the word natorium without having. In parentheses, swimming pool. We we missed a lot with that, but I think the discussion has been good. Next time, we'll put more energy into it. Everybody involved, nobody's approached me. I voted for it early, but I don't have any literature. I didn't everybody say, well, can you go here? Can you do that? And that's what it takes. In an election year, there's just so much stuff going on anyways, people are confused and overwhelmed. But let's get this thing built. Let's find a way to bring the community together to try to get built. That's my comment.
Okay. So it is item seven, consider an act upon approving the construction of a new natorium sprung structure versus brick and mortar building. Do I have a motion for item seven?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Robinson. Do I have, oh, wait a second.
My apologies to clarify.
Back up, back up, that's not going to work. Don't say it, I know, I got you. What is your motion? Which one?
Seven?
No, I know, but is it?
Sprung or the?
The sprung or the brick and mortar?
Ah, now we go back to the question, though.
I honestly think we should wait till two weeks from now and just table this till the next meeting. And then once we know whether we have the money and know how much money we have, make the decision one way or the other. Because you said, you said we can only bond with the GRT, we'll have an eighth of a percent, so we can only bond an additional 10?
So with this bond, with the, with, okay, which one are you asking for? The GRT that has not been passed or rededicating, because we have two options when it comes to GRT.
If the GRT that we're asking on the ballot gets rededicated, what's the maximum amount we can borrow?
So once, once we have a actual dedicated revenue source. Our bond council and we can go to N M F A and they will tell us the maximum amount that we can because we have a dedicated revenue source. We know that we can do the 10 million.
With that revenue stream? Okay, so we'll be looking at $14 million basically to potentially fund this with?
That is correct.
Personally, guys, I would wait till it passes or doesn't pass.
And what's the advantages if you wait?
Because then we know exactly how much money we have to spend on it. If if it doesn't pass, we have basically nothing, we have to come back and figure out some other way. If it does pass, then we potentially have up to $14 million to spend on it. Because we're going to reallocate 4 million existing, the tax that's going to be reallocated, which everybody's already paying. Hopefully, the newspaper is putting that in there, that they're already paying it. But then we'll use that revenue to pledge to go borrow money to bond out another additional up to 10 million.
So I think the question is because the cost is going to be associated with the brick and mortar versus the spring structure. That if you choose the brick and mortar, then we pull, we we pull back on some of the features in the pool. If you go with the spring structure, we'll have a little more funding to probably put in a little bit more on the pool. So I think that's where. Where staff and everyone is kind of, we kind of would really like to know what the decision is of the commission. So we can decide, do we scale it back or do we add in features?
Because if I remember right, the estimates were 12 million for the sprung and right at 15 for the brick and mortar?
Two weeks isn't going to kill us.
So we're just voting for the sprung system, right?
Yeah, so it would be actually, if you wanted to wait to after the election, it would be a month because we have a commission meeting. Sorry, we have, we have a commission meeting on Election Day.
Typically, we move that to the Wednesday because of Election Day.
You, we tried, we did that and commissioned, devoted to have it on the Tuesday.
Did we?
Yeah, yeah, so it's.
We always moved it to the Wednesday after Election Day.
So is the? We had that originally, but yes, sir.
So is it going to be on Tuesday, the fifth?
We have a meeting on the fifth or whatever date, whatever that Tuesday is, I think it's the fifth.
Is it? I thought it was the fourth.
We might ought to cancel that meeting, I don't know if we can do that and then have the mayor call a special meeting for that Wednesday. Because you probably won't be here and you probably won't be here, because you'll be working.
I don't know if we can talk about that right now.
That's off the topic, but I don't know, two weeks isn't going to kill us, guys, whether whether we approve it tonight or in two weeks. We'll know in two weeks how much money we have to spend on it and and what we can and can't do and where we're going to be at, so.
But if we, if we decide to go with the like the sprung system and if it does fail. We can do something different, right? Or no?
I think, I think that if we're, if we re, okay, what did you say? You said if we rehab the pool, if, where are you at there, girly? I'll just ask Stephanie since she's at a mic. If we rehab the, if we, if it doesn't pass, if it doesn't pass and we decide to just rehab the pool. What was the cost of that? That was a 7 million?
No, 2.5.
Or, no, that's right, it was 2.5 million. And but I guess actually what I was asking was, sorry, I asked that wrong. How much more life do we get out of it if we rehab it?
10 years.
Because I thought I heard five years, possibly 10.
Five to 10.
Okay, why would we spend 2.5 million dollars for something that might last five years? That is such a waste of taxpayer money. I would never, I I just, personally, I would not agree to that. That to me is a waste of money. Two and a half million dollars and maybe get five years, that's like. I wouldn't do that, I wouldn't do it with my personal money, I certainly wouldn't do it with taxpayer money. So so I think our only options really are, unless you guys think that two and a half million dollars for five years of life.
If the bond doesn't pass, then we're going to have to.
Then I say, if the bond doesn't pass, we're not going to do anything, I mean, I.
Still got to fix the pool.
If the tax doesn't pass, just.
If the tax, I'm sorry, not the bond, the tax.
If the tax, yeah. Why do we have to fix the pool? I mean, if the voters didn't want it, then they obviously don't want a pool. I mean, well, I'm just saying, I mean, that's just, that's just the facts. The facts are, if they don't pass this, then clearly the pool was not a priority for them. Why would we, as people that have to make that decision, spend two and a half million dollars for a pool that might last another five years? That makes no sense at all.
And that's not including what's already happening to the pool.
And that's not including the all the ridiculous amount of money that we're putting into it to limp it along. I mean, we have to be practical about this. There's, to me, it, I I don't know, for me, there's not a discussion. I would never support spending two and a half million dollars for a pool that might last another five years. I would never do that. You said yourself, the weather in in New Mexico or in El Magordo, whatever, is, that plays a large part into it. That pool is wide open right now, so we're going to spend two and a half million dollars, we may get five years out of it.
We spend 5 million, we get a sprung structure over the existing pool and the pool revamped. That's what the slideshow says.
But that doesn't guarantee the life.
So that's what our, that's what our citizens deserve, I mean, come on.
If that's what we can afford, that's all we got.
That's, to me, is just sad. I think we deserve better than that.
And it came to mind, in five years, things are going to be a lot more expensive, just like when you guys did the quality of life bond. And we didn't have enough to do the pool back then. In five more years, it's going to be expensive and we've exhausted the fund balance of Lita if you choose to rededicate it. And then we're back at square one trying to figure out maybe an even smaller pool. Where's the revenue going to come from and it's going to be?
Yeah, that, I mean, basically what you're saying is we're just kicking the can down the road. Really, that's what it is, and haven't we done enough of that? How did we get into this water mess? Because people kick the can down the road. Are we going to continue to kick the can down the road? Are we gonna? Sorry, there's an Amber Alert, everybody's phone is going off.
Mexico State Police has reason to believe Kalani is in danger.
As far as picking picking the structure tonight or in two weeks at the next meeting, it's not going to make or break the deal. And that's what I'm saying, that's what basically is being asked tonight. Do we want a brick and mortar or do we want a sprung structure? And if we wait two more weeks to make that decision, we know how much money we have to spend or don't have to spend. And then staff can look at other options if the if the tax reallocation does not pass.
I'm kind of in favor of what Commissioner Reardon's saying, you know, I think that there's a need for the pool, but we don't. You know, I think that there's a need for the pool, but we don't know what we don't know yet. And two weeks isn't an extensive amount of time to necessarily wait. That's my opinion. I mean, I just think that we don't have all the facts is the, is I see it from this commission seat. And so it's hard to say, hey, do one or the other without knowing all the facts.
You're late. Sorry. Sorry, I had to say it. Well, if you wanna table it, I guess we can table it. Unfortunately, I don't know, do we need them to, I mean, they come all the way out here. Do we need them to come back again or?
They need to come back. I think they've answered pretty much all the questions we've had from their end of it.
So this is not gonna change the price in two weeks, is it?
No.
So if we decide to do a spring structure after we know how much we have, in two or three weeks, we're in good shape? Okay.
Okay, that's fine.
Commissioner Reardon, why don't you make the, the motion then?
Just make a motion. We table this item till the next meeting.
Okay, I have a motion to.
To November 5th?
Yes. I have a motion to table.
So if you would want.
Do I need to, do we need to vote on that or can we just table it?
You need to vote to table it, but if you want to wait, it would have to be the second meeting in November because we won't know the results.
Yeah, we won't know the results because of Election Day. We will if we move it a day.
We can't, we don't have time.
We can cancel a meeting without a vote of us, can't we?
You would have to vote tonight and it's not an action item?
It's not an action item, yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't on the agenda.
Okay, so we would have to make it the 19th?
That is, uh, the, yeah.
That's two weeks.
Yep, that's the.
Or that's two weeks from the fifth, yeah.
Yes, that's the correct date.
So we kick the can down the road 30 days.
So are we gonna have a meeting on the first?
It'd be fifth.
We're gonna have a meeting on the.
Well, the first.
Tonight.
The fifth.
Which would be.
November 5th.
Anyway, I have a motion to table it till whenever staff brings it back, either the 5th or the 19th. One of those two.
Okay, I have a motion to table.
I'll second that motion.
I have a second from Commissioner Paul. Can we put up the vote?
I gotta switch.
Oh, I'm in the wrong place. Wait.
Mine didn't pop up.
Let me go ahead and rescind it. One moment.
Mine did. Yeah, Steve's did, but mine didn't.
Mine did too.
Motion passes 6-1. And where are we?
Six.
Been a long night. I'm kidding.
Item eight.
Moving on to item eight. Consider an act upon ordinance 1708 for first publication of a deannexation of parcels known as Highway 82 subdivision lots. I have never been so glad to see something on the agenda in my entire life. I'm very happy to see this. Stella, what do you got for us?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Commissioners, Acting City Manager Hernandez. Yes, tonight, I'm in front of you under the miscellaneous case process. Just to give you a little bit of history before I really get started.
This is the main plan, right?
The parcels that we're going to be discussing were actually annexed into the city limits back in 2005 by ordinance. It was an annexation that involved approximately 627 acres at that time. So, just to get going here, so the property owners of Highway 82 subdivision and a couple of other parcels next to that, which are 17 and 19 Highway 82, have petitioned the city to have their properties removed from the city limits, deannexed. So removed from the city limits and returned back to the Otero County jurisdiction. The, the four, four parcels, well, actually, you're gonna see all six that are involved there. They're, one, two, three, yeah, there's six there. So four of them are, the first two on the left are, belong to the Bearden's. You all are familiar with Bearden Auto Shop that's out there. So it belongs to that family. The additional four are part of Highway 82 subdivision. This subdivision was created in 2000. It was created in 2001. They were in the county at the time. Of course, that subdivision summary plat had to come through the city after county approved the, the subdivision, the subdividing of, of those parcels. So that's how that happened. This here is Highway 82 subdivision, which three of the, of the properties there belong to Mr. and Mrs. Thomas. You're probably familiar with, they are the owners of A&amp;M Processing. The, the one parcel to, at the very end belongs to landscaping. It's a landscaping business. I'm sorry, it skips my mind, the name of a landscaping business. So here, just to give you more information, this is a protest area that I sent out mailings to. So the parcels are located within Highway 82 subdivision lots 1 through 4. Also includes 17 U.S. Highway 82 and 19 U.S. Highway 82. The request was to deannex the above parcels, removing them from within the Alamogordo city limits and returning them to Otero County jurisdiction, like I said. The legal notice was published in the Alamogordo Daily News. Seven letters were mailed by certified return receipt mail to all property owners of record within the 200 feet from the properties, excluding public right of way, of course, and of the properties for which the, or, I'm sorry, that says rezoning. The deannexation is sought. So as of today, there have been no letters returned undeliverable. I have not received any letters of opposition. I did receive two phone calls. One phone call was actually from the property owner. You'll see right above the, the big white parcel right above the protest area. I did receive a phone call from that property owner. They mentioned they didn't want to be deannexed. I tried calling them back. I left a message and let them know that they weren't even part of this because they're already in the county. So I, I guess they're not aware that they're in the county. The other phone call was from, from the property owner at the very left-hand corner there that butts up with Highway 5470. He's just a property owner, just asked some questions. He realized that he wasn't involved in this deannexation, so he was good with that. So that's all the information I have. I'm here to answer some questions, but staff recommends approval since this request won't be material, materially detrimental to the surrounding property owners or the public. I'm open for questions.
Anybody have any questions? Okay.
Is this the first time we've ever done this?
It, it is. I went back and did some research and I could not find any time that it's ever been done. It hasn't been done in the 17 and a half years that I've been on staff. So, yeah, it was, it was definitely something new.
And it's only this?
It is only the, it's only highway, the Highway 82. Thank you, Dylan. Oh, there he goes. It's these lots here, so on Highway 82 subdivision and then 17 and 19 U.S. Highway 82. So it's a total of six lots.
That's Bearden's.
That's Bearden's, yes.
And then these guys and then the landscaping.
And then the landscaping business.
I mean, I think considering they thought they were in the county this whole time, we should probably not.
Yeah, and, and they did think that.
I'll just make a motion to approve ordinance 1708.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Reardon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Robinson. Can we put up the vote, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. And motion passes 7-0. Congratulations, you are now legally in the county. Okay, we're gonna move on to item nine. Discuss city manager recruitment and provide direction to Human Resources Department. I had this put on the agenda on the advice of our outside counsel that we should be speaking about this publicly and request public input. I had nobody sign up. I didn't personally not receive any emails. I don't know if anybody else did. Anybody receive any emails about it?
They were in our box, but there's not a whole lot to them.
Oh, I didn't see, I don't know where they, who did they go to?
They were from, they were in our box, so.
There was three comments that came into the COA HR email.
No, I didn't.
Those were put in your box yesterday.
They were from the city email, but they were to staff, I guess.
Okay. So then I guess there was a couple. I apologize, I did not.
I like the very last one.
Oh, I like the middle one.
Is that the one that, who would want the job?
Yeah. I ask myself about this position all the time. Isn't that funny? Anyway. Okay.
That's all I received too, is just that, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just give me a minute to just read this real quick. I apologize, I didn't, when was this put in our box?
Yesterday afternoon.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't check it. I was gonna say, I just checked that box too. Okay. Okay, well, thank you to those who emailed.
That's yours.
What's that?
It's yours.
It's actually my copy.
Thank you to those who, oh, is it? Thank you to those who took the time to email us. I was hoping we would have more input, but, okay, not super surprised. But anyway, what I was saying is our outside counsel recommended that we do this openly. I think it's a great idea. We, clearly, we're trying to get the community involved. And, because I, you know, they need to know. We actually do care about what people think and we do take this very seriously. So with that, I guess we will have a discussion about what it is, how we're gonna go about this recruitment. And so if anybody has any thoughts?
So Mayor, Mayor Protem and Commissioners, I put in your packet just a brief summary of the different options that you have. The first one would be for us to handle it internally like we normally do. We can, have two options there. We can post it internally, which would be open to internal candidates only, or we can post it open to the public. We can request quotes. Kind of the downfall there is if we get any quotes that are over 60,000, then we would have to go out for an RFP. So that might take a little more time than we wanna spend on it. And then the third option would be to do an RFP and go out and request quotes and qualifications from vendors.
Anybody have any thoughts?
How come we don't have the option of just putting it out there like on Indeed and the different places? You said in internal recruitment?
Yeah, we would do that internally. If we did that for my office, then we would do that advertising internally.
Not just internal. Okay, okay, I misread that. It just says in-house only announcement. So, I mean, but that would go nationwide or as far as we could reach?
Right, so we could do it in-house only or we could post it out to the public.
I think it, it needs to be posted to the public, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that goes without saying that it, it definitely has to be open to.
I just misread that. I'm sorry, it just said in-house, so I thought you meant just like advertise it to city staff.
Well, that is one option, but.
No, it definitely needs to be open to the public. I think that if we, if we do decide to go with a recruiter, that we should do an RFP. And I, that was one of the things that I talked about with Gina also is that to make it completely transparent, instead of us picking a recruiter, to go out for RFP and let, let them do a, a bid.
Even if it stays under 60,000?
Even if it stays under 60,000. And I think that, that that's probably the best way to do it because then we're not picking a recruiter. We're allowing recruiters to come to us if they're interested in bidding. And I think that that makes it about as transparent as it can be, otherwise.
How many, how many headhunting, like headhunting companies or whatever are out there, do you know?
There's hundreds.
Like that's specific for city manager type stuff?
Yes.
There would be a lot, yeah. I don't know how many, but I'm sure there's hundreds of them.
There are lots and lots that are very specific for government jobs, city management.
How many applicants did we get last time we did this?
I wanna say it was around 40.
Forty? And that was just the in-house?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Still not a lot. Got tens of thousands of municipalities and 140.
Anybody have any thoughts?
My only thoughts, I think it needs to be open to the public, obviously, regardless of which way we go. And I don't know, does it hurt to field, you know, put out an RFP and see what comes back?
Could we do both? Could we go ahead and start advertising it out however and solicit an RFP for a headhunter? Because we can always.
Probably what we should do if we're thinking that is let us open it ourselves. We'll open it to the public. We'll let it run for a certain period of time, see what we get. If we're not getting the responses that we want, then we could do an RFP. Kind of the risk that you're running is that if by chance we get an internal candidate or even somebody in the community, we could end up paying a recruiter for somebody that's already here.
I'd kinda like to see it just go out and see what we get. We can always.
I thought you wanted a recruiter.
I do and I don't.
You were pretty clear the other day that you wanted a recruiter.
We have several issues that are, that are gonna arise by the end of the year that, that, you know, and if we get into next year, we're gonna, obviously, we're gonna have another new commissioner on board. We probably won't have one till February or March by the time we get through the process of that. So it's gonna be, we'll only have six of us picking it. You see where I'm going with that? You know what I mean? I, I kinda wanna see the recruiter so we can get it, get a, a good qualified candidate. But on the other side of that, we kinda need to get it done quickly.
I don't like that. That's me. I don't like the idea that we need to get it done quickly because I think that it scares me a little bit when we say we need to get it done quickly.
I agree.
That makes me a little nervous. I don't, I don't wanna settle. We, we had a great city manager.
Say that again.
What? That we had a great? We had a phenomenal city manager. And I'm, I'm disappointed with the outcome. And I, obviously, we couldn't have done anything about it. There's nothing that we could have done that was not, it was not us, regardless of what people think. It was not us. However, even with that, you know, this is clearly, believe it or not, even though it's Alamogordo, it is a high-pressure job for some really strange reasons. And I think that for us to just hurry up and get somebody in there, we're gonna end up in the same boat again if we're not careful. We have to make sure that, that whoever. We have to make sure that, that whoever we hire understands that this is not, this isn't a cakewalk, you know, there, there's, listen, there are so many things that are different about Alamogordo and the state of New Mexico that you just don't see sometimes in other cities and states. Our laws are different here, what we're able to do and not able to do is different here, what we're limited, the, the things that we're limited by. And we need to make sure that whoever we hire completely understands that. It's not, there are lots of qualified people out there. There are literally hundreds, if not thousands, of people that are super qualified to do this. But it's not for the faint of heart. It's just not. And, and being qualified for it and being able to handle it are two entirely different things, and I just think that if we see, if we just say, oh, well, we just need to hurry up and get somebody in here, I think we're gonna end up in the same boat again, so. My concern is, you know, let's make sure that we are hiring somebody that is, again, not disqualified, but can handle the pressure, because there is pressure, so, as we've seen.
I personally think it's worthwhile to, to put the job out there through the city's resources. If there's nothing that comes back that's of interest, then put out for a RFP to do that. Because we're talking about spending a substantial amount of taxpayer money to go and source somebody that we don't know is gonna stay longer than a year or two, and to spend twenty to sixty-plus thousand dollars, to me, when we, the, the previous city manager that most recently left, I felt like was somebody that probably everybody that was sitting up here that was part of that process would have said he had what it took and he was gonna be here an extended period of time. Some unforeseen circumstances arose, that changed overnight. And for me to say that, yeah, go spend fifty thousand to pay a recruiter to find somebody for us, it's kind of like, let's go look and see what we can find first, you know? I'm gonna be terminated out here at the end of this year, so I won't be around for the full part of it, but I still think that it's worthwhile for the commission to look and see what we can get from posting to all the places.
And I don't, I don't disagree with that. I think that, that that's probably a wise choice. I just, my thing is, is I don't wanna be in a hurry. I really wanna do this right.
Yeah, I don't think that there's any hurry for it, that we have to have somebody by the year's end.
We have, yeah, exactly. Well, year's end is really gonna be here before we know it. It's almost the end of October now, so. But I don't disagree with you. I think, I think we can, and, and we did find a highly qualified person. That was not the issue. So I think we can do that again. You have some, you know, municipal league and the ICMA, and then there's a new one that actually, a new association that just started. It's not ICMA, it's somebody else that, that certainly we could, we could, you know, advertise through them as well, and LinkedIn, and LinkedIn is a great resource if you're looking for a city manager, way better than Indeed, in my opinion. So if you're looking for a city manager, LinkedIn is way better. And, and there are a lot of other places as well, so. So yeah, I mean, I don't disagree with you. I think that, that's probably not a bad idea. I just, my concern is, don't rush it. Let's make sure we do this right, so.
So what do you need from us to go ahead and advertise?
I just need your, your okay from everybody that that's the direction we're gonna go.
Do we have our finalized job description, or you?
So we have the job description attached. It's in draft form. I know there's the qualifications. You might wanna look at that real close and make sure that's what you want.
Do we bond the, the past city managers?
Did we what?
Says must be bondable. Did we bond the past city managers?
We have, they, yes.
All the directors too? Always seen that in there. I didn't know if we ever did it or not.
Yes.
I think we added that ten years in there.
Do we want that ten years of, of actual city manager experience, or do we want that?
I thought you agreed to not just city, just.
I say city or county management, upper, like a city or a county manager.
I think if, if we just wanna say public management, public management, you could put ten years of experience in public management. I think that would cover.
I say, I just, I think city or county, because they're, they're very similar in organization.
Yeah, so if you say public management, I think that covers either one. Because right now, it says five years of experience as a city manager or assistant city manager. There's a, I mean, there's not a huge difference, but do we want ten years?
See, those kinda contradict each other, though.
They do.
If we've got five years under desired, but ten years under required, they contradict each other.
Well, but also, you're saying move it to ten years, which is fine, but is it ten years as a city manager or assistant city manager? Because there's a big difference between ten years as an assistant city manager and ten years as a city manager.
I guess it could be either. It could be assistant or a city manager.
So you're okay with either one?
So we're leaving in the five years under desired and changing the one in, in the recruitment qualifications to up, not upper, but to city or county?
City, city, county, or assistant city, county manager. I don't know how you would word that to make it sound a little more professional, but. So that weeds out a lot of those. I mean, y'all remember some of the applications we got the last time, you know? People that had absolutely no business applying were applying for the job, didn't meet any of the qualifications, so.
I don't think that stops people from.
It doesn't. It doesn't.
Doesn't stop them from applying. But I, I think that for, for me, if we have desired and, and, you know, we have five years of experience as a city manager or assistant city manager, then we need to change that top one too. And it can't be just ten years of county-city, because there might be other, and, and I still think that a person can have five years, and when you said desired, as a city manager or assistant city manager, but I, I think that we can get qualified applicants with upper management, because upper management, and, I mean, it encompasses everything. It's not just a county or a city, it's everything.
But say somebody came from, I don't know what they call Twitter, you know, worked for Twitter, managing four, five, six hundred employees. They're not gonna have any experience running, you know, a public works department, or a water wastewater plan, or any of that kind of stuff.
Well, I'm not sure.
They may have the, the experience as far as managing people, but they have no experience in a lot of the areas, you know?
But I'm not sure a county manager is either.
A county manager would, because you have your road department out there, so they have that. They wouldn't have the water wastewater.
But they're not gonna have the water wastewater, they're not gonna have these quality of life departments, like we have, a senior center, a rec center, you know, parks and rec. They're not gonna have all those things, because the county doesn't, that's not what the county does. The county, a lot of it is roads and that kind of thing. And so I'm not sure that I agree with ten years, you know, ten years in county management. I don't know if they could run a city. It's way different. No, because we're gonna be back in this whole, too much pressure, I can't handle it, goodbye thing again, so. We've gotta be very, very strategic about this, and we have to be very careful. I, I don't wanna go through this again. I don't know about anybody else, but.
Well, why can't we just move the five years of experience as a city manager or assistant city manager as something that is, you know, they need to have it, not desired, but it, it needs to be in there. I said, because if we're changing that, you're saying ten years of progressive.
It's under required. We already have ten years of responsible experience in upper management, is what it says in there, under required.
Well, I'm looking at the, the recruitment qualifications, that's where I'm at, and then desired. So where else am, do I need to go to see that?
That's where I'm at, right there.
I think, I, I do think that we could consider somebody who maybe doesn't have that many years in city management, but maybe has years in, in working for a municipality. Upper management of a municipality, I think that we should consider that. There are a lot of people that, that, you know, maybe they've never decided to do that before, or whatever. I don't, I don't know why you wouldn't, but. Well, no, I do know why you wouldn't, because the life of a city manager, the average life, is three to five years, and so that's why you wouldn't do that, and so. Unless you live in Alamogordo, and then it could be less, who knows? So, sorry, I had to say it, but.
Maybe we just leave it the way.
But on that note, I do think that we need to add something in there about work, something about, and we can decide how many years working for a municipality.
I think ten. Like I say, it, it takes a lot of years to get to know all of the processes and procedures and, and different things, and, you know, and other communities are gonna do it different than we do it or have done it in the past, so. But, you know, it's just like when you go get some kind of, kind of a license or a qualification, like with the state, you know, you have to have so many years of experience before you're even qualified to.
Right, so if you work, if you've worked for a municipality for ten years in upper management, I think that you could probably potentially be considered at least for a city management position. Especially if you have a master's degree in public administration, which is what we're asking for. Why wouldn't we consider that? I think, I, I think that's something that we need to add and consider, because.
Is this what we published last time? I mean, this is what we sent out last time?
Yes, what you have there is what we published last time.
Because we can always reject everybody. If, if we get in a bunch and we look at them and, and we don't like any of them, or we don't like what we're seeing coming in, then we can reject that and, and put it back out again, correct?
So we have an evaluation process where we score all of these items, and then we narrow it down to those who are qualified and those who are not. It would be at that point through the interview process and elimination through that process, final interviews, that you would have the selection at the very end.
But if we decide that, that, that none of them are a fit, then we can put this advertisement back out and go back out for some additional?
Yes, if that's the decision in the end, that nobody's suited, yes.
Okay. I say we just leave it the way it is. I don't, and, and put it out, see what we get.
Is there a motion?
No, we don't have a motion. It's just discussion on this one.
It's just discussion. We don't.
Give direction to staff.
Go for it, Kim.
I think it's, I think that we need to leave it as city management.
I do too.
I don't, I just think county management is way different than city management, and they're not gonna, they're not gonna understand the.
We just leave it the way it is. It just says upper, upper management.
The complexity of running a city. Yeah.
You know, the county manager down there, she's been there probably, what, fifteen, eighteen years now, so.
No, I understand that, but they still don't have parks and rec and a rec center and a senior center, and what else do we have? Like, you know, they still don't have what we have. That's not a diss. I'm just saying that we're a different municipality than, 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 you know, the county, and so we do things differently, and I think it's important that we have somebody that understands that. They've gotta be able to understand and make those decisions, because, again, it's a little different here, so. Okay, so. You wanna leave it at ten years of progressively responsible experience in upper management? How does everybody feel about that?
It's fine.
Okay. Five years of experience in government?
You wanna change that to ten? From five to ten, into the years in government?
Well, if we're gonna do that, we might as well just take out the first line and just say ten years of experience working in a municipality, or something like that. Which to me actually makes more sense. Not necessarily a city manager, but working for a municipality in upper management. So you could say ten years of progressively responsible experience in upper management, working for a municipality.
That sounds all right.
Okay, and then we could just take out the five years of government, because if they're working for a municipality, they're working in government. Did you get that, Kim?
I did. So we're taking out the five years, and on the ten years, we're adding.
Progressively responsible experience, working, you know, working in upper management, or working for a municipality in upper management, or something.
Along those lines.
You can word that, yeah. And then resident of Alamogordo for six months is good, bondable, valid, definitely a valid driver's license.
Do we have the salary in here too? That we were looking, the salary ranges, you'll need that as well, right?
It would, it will be in the posting as a range. And it would be DOQ.
Okay. Didn't we decide we wanted to kinda up that a little bit, or?
Can't remember what we.
Actually, you'd sent us, you'd sent us an email about what some of the other municipalities were paying, because we had discussed it briefly.
I thought there was some discussion around the upper range of like.
There was. Did you see the email that Kim sent? We're, we're actually, we should up it a little. I agree, but we're actually.
We're pretty competitive.
We're pretty competitive, yeah.
I think we, what do we cap it at? Like one thirty, one forty?
I don't remember off the top of my head, but I think it was around one forty-five.
Usually it's like between one thirty and one forty-five, or one twenty and one forty-five. And we had discussed briefly about maybe doing one fifty to one seventy-five.
That's what I thought we had discussed.
We wanna go a little higher? I mean, the, the bigger that number is, because there was, there was one of those that was at like two fifty on your email, wasn't it? I don't think we need to go that high, but, you know.
I think one seventy-five for Alamogordo is.
I think that's a pretty good.
Yeah.
I think that's what the, isn't that what the school superintendent makes, somewhere around there?
So we wanna go maybe one fifty to one seventy-five, or one twenty to one seventy-five, leave a broad range?
What if we just put a bottom number and then DOQ?
Okay. I guess, and then that kinda leaves it open.
Right.
Because usually they'll put what they kinda want.
What do we want our bottom number to be?
He said one twenty-five.
I mean, I think you have to leave it at the one, one twenty or whatever.
The one twenty?
And then.
Think that'll scare away potential applicants, though, seeing how they only wanna pay one twenty?
What about one thirty?
What's your experience on that? I mean, as far as.
I, I mean, it just depends on the candidate. Some are in for the money, there are some that are not. You know, it just depends on where people are at in their life. Most are gonna wanna make more than where they're at now in order to, to bring them in. We just don't know what that number is.
And I would hope that they would do research. I gotta tell you that as cities go, I know everybody thinks our housing is expensive and blah, 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 but no. I'm, I'm, it costs a lot less to live in Alamogordo than it does in a lot of other cities, so. You know, taking that into consideration, I do believe people need to be compensated, so.
Do we have that wage study we did in, like, a couple of years ago? Did it have any info on what the city manager should be at?
The results of that were the pay scale that we have now for the city manager, and it's that twenty-five step plan, starts about a hundred and twenty.
One twenty and goes up to that, that one fifty-ish range? Okay. I don't know. I'm afraid when somebody's looking through there and they see a hundred and twenty, it's gonna kinda like, I don't wanna mess with that. Does that make sense?
See, I'm more worried when they Google Alamogordo, they're gonna say, I don't wanna mess with that.
Most people that put in a resume at this level will tell you what they want. And then it's up to you to, to decide what you're willing to give, so I think, you know, I said, if you put a bottom amount on there, and then let them tell you, you know, what they're looking for, based on what they read in the resume.
I got you. Okay, so if we do the one twenty DOQ, then.
I guess another option would be just DOQ.
Then that leaves it kinda open.
I think we need to put an amount on there. I would scroll on by if it were me. You're like, they're not gonna tell us, forget it.
I think Commissioner McDonald's right, though, or Mayor, sorry, Mayor Protem is, is, you know, typically, they do put a dollar amount that they're, they're looking at. You know, we had that one gentleman that applied that said he'd do it for sixty thousand a year, you know? You know, we had that one gentleman that applied that said he'd do it for 60,000 a year, you know?
Oh, my gosh.
Or 40. I think it may have been 40, actually, but.
But he was in 40.
Well, tempting, I think not. Yeah, all right, so.
We want to put 120?
120?
120 DOQ?
DOQ, okay.
Depending on qualifications. Okay, that's good. And then.
Why do we have lift and move items weighing up to 50 pounds in here?
Yeah, that's standard language, template language that we put in all job descriptions.
Just in case he's got to.
Yeah, you've got to have a buddy if it's over 50 pounds.
I got you.
Okay, do we have anything on here? And this is a serious question. Is there anything on here that says must work well under pressure? I'm serious. That's a serious question.
I'll look through it, and we can add that for sure.
I, I think we need to bold it and underline it, and.
A city manager occasionally has to work outdoors in varied weathered conditions?
Yeah, fire up in the mountains.
And.
Doesn't technically have to. He can just say, hey, go do that for me.
Yeah, we have a pretty unique city. I mean, there's not a lot of cities that own a lake.
That's right.
That's true.
Or have a D-SAL plant.
That's right.
We're very unique, and we need somebody that.
Or a zoo.
Yeah, non-functioning D-SAL plant.
Or a zoo, exactly. We are very unique. We're not. Trust me, I'm learning. Okay. Yeah, so I think must work well under pressure is really important.
Okay.
That's going to scare people.
And, and, yeah, well, I know. But, you know, my other, I'm going to say this too, and don't, don't shoot me. I'm just making a suggestion. How do you word something, this is 2024, social media is everywhere. So, how do we word that? So, we're basically saying must be social media savvy? Like, you know what I mean? And I know that's a unique quali, no, that is an important qualification.
It isn't, it isn't.
I, I love when he says that. It's kind of like.
For somebody that doesn't have social media.
Being kind of pregnant or something. I don't know. It isn't like.
I mean, I don't.
I do think it's important.
I couldn't post nothing to nothing right now.
I read social media, but I take absolutely no.
I understand that, but, but we're talking about a city manager that needs to understand that the power of social media and the influence that it has on people. And I think it's important that.
It does.
That we're honest with people and upfront. I, I don't think, honestly, I don't think our former city manager understood. I mean, I don't know. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I just don't think that.
But I don't think we're unique to social media. I, I don't, I don't think we're unique.
Which is why I think it should be a qualification. I think that, not that, not that you have to read social media, but that you, you are.
But don't we have a department that does that for us?
Well, they put stuff on social media.
Well, that's what I mean. I mean, it's not necessarily.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
I can put some language in there where it talks about computer skills and that kind of thing, so.
Yeah, it's not that I think that they need to be social media savvy to post on social media. It's more like they need to be aware of the influence of social media, is what I'm saying. Listen, you tonight gave me this whole story about, something about posting on social media and what these people said. Clearly, it influences us, right?
I, I read it. And, and if it is legitimate concern on social media, then I'll bring it up.
Exactly, and I think that that's my point.
But a lot of that that is on social media is misinformation. Or they don't know all of the facts that go around it.
I totally get that. And I think that.
When, when there's a legitimate issue on social media, then yes, we need to, to discuss it.
Yes, and, and that is my point right there, is.
But on the other side of that.
We have to take it seriously when it's a legitimate issue. We have to.
On the other side of that, though.
And we need somebody that takes that seriously.
We can't react to everything that's on social media by, with the government. You know what I mean? We need to be able to run everything. And, you know, Commissioner Hernandez, when he was still here, he was real big on that, 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 that we, the government really doesn't have a whole lot of place on social media. It's a place to interact with your friends and your family and that kind of thing.
I don't know that I completely agree with that. I think at one time that might have been the case, but I don't think that that's the case anymore. It is a huge influence. We see it locally, and we even see it nationally, so.
You got to take social media with a grain of salt. That's all it is. You got to, you got to, you know, react to the ones that are legitimate concerns. And the other ones, we just got to kind of overlook it.
Okay, if we can put something, something.
I'll work something in.
Thank you.
So, I do have a question. If we go ahead and post this, what you're looking at for, like, a review period? Want a review period after 30 days?
So, advertise for 30 and then a review, review period of, I don't remember what we did last time.
30 days?
Another 30 days? I believe it was.
It's probably 30 or 60.
I think it was 60 for the initial, and then?
It was 30, and then you guys did an additional.
Okay. 30 and 30? 30 and 60, whatever, whatever works.
And do we think we're going to get a lot of responses if we're going into the holiday season?
We probably will. I don't know, the one that, other than elections in two weeks, the election will probably be the bigger one, you know? Kind of a chaos, but.
Well, so we'll post it open until filled, and we can review after 30 days. If we're not happy at that point, then we can just put it out another review period.
Sounds good. That sounds good.
Or we can take the option of getting a headhunter at that point as well, if.
After 60 days?
If we don't have anything really viable, yeah. Does that give you everything y'all need? Okay.
Okay, does anybody have any more questions?
No, can we move to adjourn?
You can.
Hey, it's past my bedtime.
Let's, we still have to eat dinner.
Not really. I'm lying. I could never go to bed this early, but. Okay, so, any more questions? No? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, move. Second.
A motion, hold on just a second. Hold on, hold on. A motion for Mayor Pro Tem McDonald to adjourn.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Robinson. Can we put up the vote?
I spoke to Rachel about that. Initial, initial and a second is good enough. We don't need to vote. We're good.
Okay, so we're good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, cool. We're adjourned.